So we do not have anyone sign up for public participation. Is there anyone here that would like to speak for public participation? Anyone that would like to speak for public participation? Any takers going once, going twice? Okeydoke, we'll move on. Consent calendar, would you? Any commotion that the Board of Education approved that items on the consent calendar? It says it's 22-63 through 22-65, best recommended.
Second.
Moved by Lauren, seconded by Al. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any extensions? Pass unanimously. Do we have any staff representatives this evening? I don't see any. Student representatives.
Good evening, Board of Ed members, Cabinet and community members. Thank you for allowing me to represent.
Much better.
Good evening, Board of Ed members, Cabinet and community members. Thank you for allowing me to represent and speak on behalf of the Alternative Center of Christ. Interviews with prospective students and their families will take place on Saturday, June 11th, with ACE back. Additional interview slots will be offered after school during the last week's school. To date, a total of 29 interviews have been set up with students, parents and ACE back. The ACE White Water Rattling Trip is scheduled to leave on June 1st and return on June 3rd. Anthony Hellman, Kyle Tricola and Ashley Parker are taking 15 ACE students to Camp at Monroe State Park in Newark and racked 15 miles out to the river. The ACE Coffee House will take place on June 9th from 5:30 to 7:30 at the Haddes Prep Pavilion. The Coffee House is an opportunity for the ACE community to gather and we'll see our students and staff read original pieces of work and poetry as well as musical performances. The ACE graduation is set for Tuesday, June 14th at 4:00 at the Broadview Auditorium. A special thanks to Dr. Thomas and Dr. for allowing us to host a revue at the wedding. ACE would like to celebrate our April Student of the Month award winner Leo Sanchez for his hard work, kind nature and his academic performance. ACE would also like to recognize Jason Foktar-Gonos and Haley Sanchez as our Ace of Hearts Award winners for their caring nature. Lastly, ACE would like to recognize Jasmine Hussy as the ACE Space Award winner for her hard work in April. Thank you for allowing me to share what's going on with the ACE family and stay safe and rewarded.
Thank you, Nicole.
Thank you. I have two questions. Are you performing on June 9th? At the Coffee House?
My English teacher asked me to sing.
Okay.
I have a friend that passed away earlier, so I can maybe sing a song.
Oh, I see, I see. And my other question is, are board members invited? Yes, I'm saying yes. Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you, Nicole.
Action items, Mr. Russo.
Action item A. That the Board of Education adopt the April 22 financial report in accordance with Exhibit 22-66.
Second.
Moved by Al, seconded by Ralph. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any extensions? Pass unanimously. And so we're at presentation.
So at this time, our Assistant Superintendent, Mrs. Kelly Truceus, is going to present on Goal One, Student Learning and Achievement in College and Career Readiness for All Students, with a specific focus on student attendance and engagement. I'm also going to.
Hold the slide, man, so that presentation can get carried out. Thank you. So this presentation, as Mr. Lawson said, is all about student attendance and engagement. So we're going to go through some historical data as well as the year-to-date projections for chronic absenteeism. So chronic absenteeism by definition is when a student is absent for 10% or greater of the total number of school days that they are enrolled in school year. So what that means is if a student is enrolled for 100 days of school and they've missed 10 days or more, they are considered chronically absent. And this number is based on the days that the student is enrolled during the school year. So for some students, it'll be the full 180 days, for other students that move into the district, it'll be a lesser number. But we're looking for 10% or more of those days missed of school classifies against being chronically absent. The data that we'll review will go from kindergarten through 12th grade. Preschool is not included in this state collection for attendance. So looking at this slide, it will show you the chronic absenteeism rates from the school year 2016-17 all the way through to present day. As you can see, in the 2016-17 school year, the rate was 7.2% of students in district were chronically absent. And that was pretty consistent up until the pandemic hit. And then we saw a significant spike in our chronic absenteeism rate. In the 1920s school year, which in March was when the district closed down, we did increase to 10%, 10.9%. And then that continued to increase over the 2020-21 school year. I do want to point out that this current school year is not based on EdSite state data. It is the projections because we are not yet finalized with the school year. And if you look at the next slide, you will see that our chronic absenteeism rate when you compare us to the state average across time, as well as comparable districts such as Norwalk and Stanford, that we are pretty consistent. In fact, we're a little bit lower than the state average, as well as our two comparison districts, when you compare us over school years. Next, I'm going to break down the chronic absenteeism data by race ethnicity, and then we'll look at ESL, Special Education and High Needs. So looking at this slide, what you will see is, I will use the demographic of Asian, that 46 students fell into that chronic absenteeism bucket in the 2016-17 school year. If you look over to present day, we see 104 students of that demographic that are falling into that chronic absenteeism rate, meaning that they're missing 10% or more of school days. The percentage number next to it, just to clarify, when you look at the Asian students and the percentage in the 2016-17 school year, you will see 6.3%. What that represents is that is a total of 6.3% of that total subgroup that is falling into that chronic absenteeism rate. So you will see an uptick over the course of the years from the 2016-17 school year to present day in the percentage of students across all subgroups that are increasing in chronic absenteeism. We do know some outliers where we have higher chronic absenteeism rates with our Black and African-American population, as well as our students identifying as two or more races. Those are a little bit higher than the other subgroup areas when we compare them across the district. Next, we're going to look at the Special Education, our free and reduced lunch, and then our ESL students. So again, you will see the data over time consistent with the data for the total school population from the 2016-17 school year to present date. We are seeing an uptick in our chronic absenteeism rate over those school years, particularly commensurate with pandemic. And so when you look at the Special Education data, this reads the same as the previous slide that I had shared with you. So when we look at the 2016-17 school year, that 186 number represents 186 students that are identified as students with special needs are also chronically absent or missing 10% or more of school days. That represents 13.7% of all Special Education students in the district. And you can see for our free and reduced lunch, we are seeing the largest percentage of students that are chronically absent in our free lunch population. So we are noticing that that economic factor is also another contributor to attendance at school. Just as a reminder, I know we talked about high needs before. If a student is identified as any one of the subgroups that is on top of that, so Special Education, Free or Reduced Lunch, or ESL, so they could be identified as one, two, or all three of those, that that is representative of that data. So you will see in the current school year, we have 2,051 students that are high needs or meeting one or more of those criteria that are identified as chronically absent, and that is representing 24.5% of the total school population. Next, we're going to break it down by grade level for you. And what you will see over time is that we have, our outlier is kindergarten, and a higher percentage of chronically absent students at the younger grade levels. So we are seeing it is more likely for kindergarteners to be out of school. That has been historic over time, so there's not much difference between the 2016-17 school year with that being a higher percentage of absences compared to fourth or fifth grade than the present year. That said, the current year, we are seeing an increase in the percentage of students that are falling into that bucket. And part of the reason for that, I want to remind you that in the 1920s school year, we shut down and were fully remote. So if students were not logging in and engaging and attending at school, they were classified as absent. In the 2020-21 school year, we started the year as virtual learning, then shifted to a hybrid model. And then this year, we are kind of recovering from those two modes of instruction. So we are certainly seeing that there are some lagging effects of chronic absenteeism. I also want to highlight though, particularly this school year, especially in the fall, we were encouraging students to send at school for safety measures. So what I mean by that is sniffles, a cough, kind of above and beyond what we would typically do in a normal school year, we were sending students home as COVID safety precautions. So that was also contributing to the absenteeism. We also saw situations in which students took two or three days to get a COVID test and would have to remain out of school for several days. So that all contributed to that number increasing over time. Next, we're going to look at the sixth through 12th grade chronic absenteeism data. And what you will see is the opposite. So from sixth grade to 12th grade, we see an increase over the school year. So it is more likely for an 11th or 12th grader to be absent than it is for a sixth or seventh grader. And you will see that that is consistent over time, again, with the last two years being higher in the chronic absenteeism rate due to the same factors that I mentioned at the elementary level. This is how we measure our chronic absenteeism rate internally in district. So Kara Wonsor, who I know you guys have all met and was very helpful in pulling these presentations together, and I work on supporting our LEAP program, which is our learner engagement and attendance program, which really looks at chronic absenteeism and targets students to provide immediate intervention. And so the way internally we look at chronic absenteeism data is month by month. We run lists of students in every single building across the district and meet with the building administrators, as well as their support services teams, to look at the students within their school who are meeting that chronic absenteeism or 10% of school days absent. And what we're looking for is patterns or trends. So for example, we may see that in one building, kindergarteners are more likely to be absent, and we talk about strategies to make sure our families are informed of our attendance rules and policies. Or we may see an outlier with our ESL or Special Education population, and we talk about how to intervene with those. You'll notice here that there are some spikes here in the current school year data that also correlate with the pandemic. We saw a large uptick in the December and January months of students that were absent, and part of that also correlated with the spike in COVID that we saw. We also then saw around April of this year that there was another spike. Another thing I want to point out from the September data is that we did have a lot of students that were entering students, that there were some delays in receiving their vaccinations in order to be able to start school. And we did notice when we drilled down into that data that that was some of the contributing causes early on in the school year, such as the month of September. Next, I want to point out, this is our attendance rate by month. And this slide, I think, is one of the most powerful in the presentation. So despite the high levels of chronic absenteeism that we've discussed, the uptick that we've seen, particularly in the last two school years, the good news is, is this is month by month, we have on average 93% or 92% of our students attending school every day. That's significant. That is a high attendance rate for kids in our district, and that's something that we're very, very proud of. So what does this mean when we look at this slide compared to the other chronic absenteeism data? What this is telling us is it's not the same kids that are out every day, month to month. There are different groups of kids for different reasons, and we did see a huge fluctuation, again, due to some of our COVID issues that we were encountering. So I still want to highlight that we're still at a high level of daily attendance across the district, with the last month being 92.3%. And over the course of this school year, 92.5% is what we're projecting as of, if we pulled the data. So lastly, you know, one of the important things with attendance at school, and we do see chronic absenteeism, is some of the strategies that we've used. So the LEAP grant that we've spoken about gave us funding, we were one of about 15 districts across the state, to run some interventions with students. So what we did in that program is that we had staff members reaching out to families above and beyond the school day. So they do it as part of the regular school day, but before school, after school, going to visit families at their home, setting up phone calls, virtual meetings, anything we can do to review why we need students at school and what we can do to help overcome some of the barriers. So for example, through this program, some of our social workers and psychologists realize that certain kids were missing school because of a need for vaccination, so we link them up with clinics. Or barriers such as childcare, so we link them up with community daycares and programs and services to support that. Or just not understanding the importance of, you know, taking an occasional day here or there and the cumulative effect and the learning impact that that has. So this program has been instrumental in really providing us with extra time beyond the school day, as well as some training for our staff on how to overcome those barriers. As part of this program, we've also been able to participate in several other things that were put on by the State Department of Ed. The Community of Practice is times that the state calls together districts, Kara's a regular person in this program as well, Kara Wonsor, where they look at deep dives of data. So they pull data of a sample district and really talk about, let's, how do we disaggregate this, how do we analyze this, what do we learn from this data, and how can this inform our practices moving forward? The Top Tuesdays, again, another State Department of Ed program, is an opportunity for districts to share together and collaborate. What did you do that went really well? What did you try that did work? Let's learn from each other so we're not all trying to reinvent the wheel. Through GANDE, we've also added the Family Liaisons. They've been instrumental, similar to the way that we can use the funding from the LEAP grant. We have also the Help Us Our Family Liaisons, many of whom are bilingual or trilingual, so we jump to our families to have conversations, to overcome those barriers, and really impress upon them the importance of attendance at school and what we can do to support students in getting back into school. And then lastly, communication and collaboration with all of our community organizations, you know, whether it's churches, whether it's youth groups, whatever it might be, daycare facilities, to really partner with them and help to support our families. Sometimes we find that it could be a simple busing issue, or it's something minor that really, a quick change and tweak can significantly improve the outcomes for kids. I will stop there for any questions.
Thank you. Would be a fair statement, these numbers last year are because of mitigating COVID?
Yes.
My second question that I was going to ask is, next year, would you have a strategy to mitigate, bless you, an outreach? And I want to thank you for your efforts and thinking ahead of my switch.
It's a team effort. It's a team effort. So everyone, our administrators, our teachers, our people services staff, the cabinet, everyone really is looking at this data ongoing and making sure that we're intervening for the best measures we can.
So we make sure that no child is left behind?
Correct.
Thank you.
And we compare to the state.
So compared to the state in the earlier slide, we are actually, across all the years that I showed, we are slightly below the state average, including during the pandemic. It was the second or third slide. There you go. Excellent. Yep, there you go. So you will see the Danbury data is the second group of ours there, and the state average is the first one.
So the higher the number, the more students percentage-wise are absent? So the state average is, I believe it's 19, but I can't see it.
State average is 19 this year, and we're 17.4 this year. And then when you compare prior to the pandemic, so if we pick the 2016-17, the state average was 9.9% of students chronically absent, and we were 7.2. So consistently across time, certainly we have room to improve our chronic absenteeism rate, but we have consistently been below the state average.
Are you doing anything in particular to bring that number down even more?
So all the strategies that I talked about on the last slide, with the engagement, the outreach to the parents, the disaggregation of the data, having those conversations with schools so that they understand who the students are that are chronically absent and what their needs are to intervene, that's the stuff that's made the difference in getting our kids into school.
And so our data office, led by Kara Wonsor and Kelly, Assistant Superintendent, they were actually meeting one-on-one with schools to review that data, review those names of students one by one, for the schools to follow up with those families. So just wanted to share.
And we're noticing, there are some common trends across the district, like our kindergarten students being more likely to be chronically absent, but we are noticing in certain buildings that there are different anomalies. And so helping those schools to drill down, to talk about the students and overcome those barriers is really at the key to success. It's been very, very helpful to have these conversations with the staff that are the closest to the students and know what the families need, and then bringing some programs to support.
So absent, do you consider them absent? If they come to school that day and they get sent home, is that an absence? Or is that included in this?
Half-day, if they attend for a half-day, they're considered present by the state. So if they leave prior to the half-day, it will be considered an absence. And I also should have shared throughout the presentation that any out-of-school suspension, so this is absence for any reason. It could be an illness, it could be, you know, a bereavement day, it could be a vacation day, not where students have us, but a day that a family asks to leave a student home, it could be an out-of-school suspension day.
And we don't differentiate between like excused absence or unexcused absence?
So in a chronically absent definition, we are just looking for that 10% or more. However, internally, we are certainly keeping track of their expectations of families when a student is out, that they're excused or unexcused, how you notify the school. And a family can technically get up to 10 days in which they can keep a child out of school, really without proof or documentation. Beyond that 10th day, there are then a series of requirements that a family's required to meet. For example, a doctor's note, proof that there was a legal matter or something like that. So it starts ticking on day one, right? So even if they're in school for a month at the beginning of the year, not just if they come in in the middle of the year? So it's the date of total membership. So if a student starts on the 100th day of school, their total days of enrollment would be 80, because we're 100 days of school days, and so their 10% threshold would be. Where a student that is here for 180 days, their 10% threshold is 18. And so it's really every individual student, based on the total days we expect them to enroll, or their total days they're expected to attend versus the total days that they actually attend. So from student to student, and it could be different as far as their denominator and fraction. Other questions?
Is this a state law that a student is out 10 days, they need to present a doctor's note?
Yes, there are specific requirements beyond the 10th day per the state. When a student's absent, that they need to provide proof of the absence, and there's numerous different reasons that a student can retire. Thank you very much. I hope, if you have any follow-up questions, please don't hesitate to reach out. And just know that the year-to-date data is as of May 11th, when the data was last pulled. And so it will fluctuate and change slightly by our last date of school, but we anticipate it to be, you know, on or about 20. And I, lastly, just want to thank Kara Wonsor, she was instrumental in pulling together this down in presentation.
Thank you, Kev.
Thank you, Kev.
This one. This one, Lauren. Dr. Seelik, if you don't mind, since the presentation is still up, I have a couple of, as part of the superintendent report, we have a couple of updates we'd like to provide the board. One is on Goal Two, Family School and Community Partnerships, and we also want to provide an update on Parent Square and the district website. So the board might recall, this is part of the superintendent goals, and quite frankly, I think some goals of the district for some time, and it's an opportunity to update and refresh the district website. So that work is underway, and we had projected that we would be, a projection of opening up our school year with a new district website, so we want to provide an update for the board this evening. And then also want to provide an update on Parent Square, particularly given the plan is to do completely gradual release from School Messenger as of June 30th, and fully meet with Parent Square effective July 1, 2022. So Dr. Seelik, if you can take it from there, and then we'll please kick it back to your job.
Sure. Thank you, Seelik. So Parent Square, as you all know, we've been slowly ramping up the software, and from a district level, we completely pivoted away from School Messenger already. Any call or letter that you get is now being entirely through Parent Square. Schools are, some of them are ahead of the curve, and even last night at the Teacher of the Year, where I saw some principals that were posting pictures on their parents' lives at their home. So I was pretty thrilled to see that, that was the first time I actually kind of saw it in action in the hands of the principals. So we have some, we still have a little bit of work to do to get all the way over the hump here. So, next slide. So there's three basic ways people can get in communication through Parent Square. You can get an email, you can get a text, you can get a phone call. And we have 70% of our parents, I'm sorry, 70% of our parents are getting email contact. We have about 17,675 parents in the system right now. Like I said, 77% of those are getting email. And we have about 23% that are getting text message. So I was really, kind of, when I saw this data, I thought 77 plus 23, there's a real temptation there to say, well, that's 100, we're getting 100% of our parents. But I know that's not true because some people are getting both email and texts, so it's not quite that clean, and we can't get random enough of the data to figure out exactly who. So we're just going to move forward, pushing out the remainder of the campaign to make sure people download the app, that they validate their information and register their accounts. So far, we have only about 6% of our parents, so 6% of that 17,000 have downloaded the app. And we're going to be starting this week a big campaign through QR code and other means, sending out regular messages to remind people to download the app. Because once you get in the app, you have a whole lot more bandwidth. You can select your options, you can create your settings, you can decide how you want to get the information. Sometimes people will get it only in Spanish, or come in English, all that stuff you can do through the app. So we're really pushing hard to get people through the app, it'll just increase the communication cap with them. So that's the list on Parent Square. School Messenger goes away the 30th, and we are communicating with the principals so they're aware of it, and like we said, they're managing their own school, according in varying degrees, but I fully expect everybody will be there. And like we said, they're, they're managing their own school onboarding in varied degrees, but I fully expect everybody, everybody will be there when the time comes. All right. The next one here is the school website. And we've been working with an agency called Lumi out of Hartford now, pretty much since the beginning of the year in January. So this is a four-phase onboarding, and we're currently in phase three of the process. So originally, it was just kind of what do you want it to look like, what do you want it to be able to do, what's the interactivity? It's more about pushing out information, isn't supposed to be two ways. So we went through that early piece, and then we went into phase two, which was creative design. This is where we started picking things like color palettes, and what was going to be the sort of, you know, scrolling picture, or was it going to be a static picture? And, you know, you know, what sorts of things was it going to pull from? Was it going to push calendar things? Was it going to push news stories? So that was all phase two. Now we're in phase three, where the site's actually being developed. And in a second, I'm going to show you some of the early ones, they're called wireframes that we have locked up. They're pretty cool, actually, if you're, if you're going to like. And especially if you've been waiting through the current site. So once we get out those, those mockups, we're currently in the place now where there's the sort of holding cell for all the data that we have. They don't just pull it all from the old site and push it into the new site. It has this sort of purgatory where it goes into, and it sits there, and then they decide, okay, well, this is going to work, because it's going to have to go and fit like this, and if the header's here. So there's a whole lot of, of sort of negotiating the current content to maybe fit into the new site. So we're currently in the process of pulling all the stuff out of the old site, determining what we want to go into the new site. And we're about to cross over into that next phase now, where they start fitting it into place. If you go one more slide, you can see that, that, that process going on right now. We're expecting by June twenty-ninth, that we're going to have almost a fully staged site to look at with our actual full content in it. And we will be starting to train our district staff on how to update the site, how to put in information, change calendars, update pictures, all that kind of stuff. And then later on, the board, we're going to be working with school staff so that they can update their sites as too. And then we expect full approval of the site by August seventeenth, twenty-third, roughly around that week. So we're hoping really that we'll be able to go live right around the first week of September, once we iron out all those, all those things. Now, of course, this is a mess case scenario, it's technology. But so far, everything's been on track, so we're very hopeful. So let's go to the main event here. So Lumi put together this cool site for us, so we can actually scroll through and get a little picture of what it's going to look like. So some of these will be rolling pictures. You'll have your menu right there, where you can decide what you need to do, whether you want to find your school, or set a registration appointment. These will pull automatically from pages that have news stories. So when somebody wants a track meet, it'll be in our communications, personal, talk to the principal, get the picture, and story about, you know, the athletic event, or art competition, or music recital, or whatever it was, put the story in there, and then it'll start pulling up. You know, we'll be able to create a setting about what we want to post, or last two weeks, last three weeks, or what have you. And that's going to be our homepage. So that's what you'll see when you land on our new site.
This is the landing, or is it the top? What's the whole thing?
That's home.
Oh, right there.
Yeah. And right now, these are stock photos, so we'll be putting in our own art. So the next one is the content page, and it's going to look pretty similar. So this will probably say, you know, registration, and then you'll have, can you click on the episode page? There we go. So yeah, this would be, you know, like a department page. It could be resources, it could be registration, it could be all of our schools. And each one of these will be set accordingly, so you'll just go down and navigate, you'll find what you need. We were very intentional about, intentional about keeping the aesthetic clean. We wanted a lot of white space, just so it was very easy to navigate, you know, and it'll translate all to mobile. You can actually see the little notch at the top there. That's because just in the, when they're doing these little designs, they'll use the same one for mobile. You won't actually see that notch on a computer, because you have that, that header bar at the top of a, both Mac and a PC. So that bar disappears on a computer, but it's actually already being optimized for mobile. So everything will fit, whether you have a small phone or a big phone, you'll be able to see it, and nothing will look too cramped or crowded. So that's where we're with the website. It's actually really exciting, because I, I, I hear daily the challenges we have with the current site, just finding basic things, or when we want to post something, about where do we put it, so people can actually find it. So this is, this is going to be a real exciting chapter for us. And like I said, we're very optimist, we're ready to go with it, very listen. Yes?
Did you say that the ability to edit is going to be dispersed among staff?
So internally, we're going to have a couple of staff dedicated to editing, so our communications team, and then a few other folks from IT. But principals will have the capacity to edit their own page as well. So if they want to put something up about an event at the school, they can do that and not have to, you know, put it in a queue for, for us to do it. So we think it's just more efficient than that.
Is there anybody going to be monitoring, you know, solely in charge, you know, keeping an eye on it?
Yeah, our communications office, so Vivian and myself will be keeping it up.
The schools update their websites now, right? So it's kind of like the same thing.
Is that regarding?
Yeah.
So the, the next goal is goal three, I'm sorry. The next goal is goal three, this is the responsibility planning for growth for the sub-bullet district's safety study and planning documents. This is also one of the goals for the superintendent that the board had approved. This study, quite frankly, taken several months to complete. We're also, almost also, almost done with the process, and Dr. Seelick will walk us through how that's going.
Thank you. This is actually quite a timely reporting. So we've begun a series of security audits of all of our schools. This is something that we're planning to do every few years, just to make sure that they stay recent, and then that we can implement all the recommendations of the auditor. So currently, we're doing an audit of twenty of our buildings. It would have been twenty-one, but since we're out of the primary center, we're not going to be doing that one, so it's twenty. We have an auditor, his name is Officer Marsh, he's from the Woodbury PD, and he's a privately trained school security consultant. We decided to go this way. We actually had some conversations with Kerma at the beginning. And we thought the process that they were going to engage in was just a bit too over the top. And we wanted to make sure that it was people going into the schools, that we were able to do it in a way that wasn't going to sort of cause alarm, freak out kids, and, you know, make administrators really nervous about people going to the school. So we found Officer Marsh's approach was, was just about the sort of goal we lost, so we were looking for. So he's going along with our security coordinator, Rich Torres. At the time I wrote this, it was four. I believe they've got three more schools since. So they've been in seven different schools. They'll be all conducted in May and June of this year, and completed before the end of the school year. So when they go into the schools, what they basically do is they look at a variety of factors. They look at the physical building, the entry and the exit. They check doors, make sure no one's propped the door open, you know, or, or, you know, put a, you know, put a garbage can in the door for ventilation, or any of these sorts of security things. They look for exposure, accessibility to sensitive equipment. So if there's, you know, some electrical box that's out, and somebody could go and rip wires out, they look for exposure for those sorts of things. Surrounding areas and grounds, if there's a lot of trees, if there's a hillside, if there's woods where, you know, people can, you know, kind of not be seen. Basic things like signage, parking, capacity for people to trespass, if there's a lot of entry points to, to the campus. Basic processes and procedures upon entering the building, the security, the, the safety advocate, have you sign in? Do they ask for your ID? Do they, you know, follow all the different steps and procedures? And also some of the physical things, is the way it's set, is, is the building set up so that you actually have to walk through that safety advocate, and you can't sort of skirt them by going, you know, a different way? And also technology systems for security, so things like cameras, alarms. We've been lucky to get two state grants, and we'll be able to fund a lot of alarms and security cameras. And we'll be installing those over the course of the next years, if we're able to build up grants. And then any other issues that they identify along the way, it could be, you know, something about safety, flooring, you know, some tripping hazards, something like that. So yeah, we'll be finished with these by the end of June, and we'll have a final report that they, the Officer Marshers submit to us. We're expecting the report to come in early July. The timeline will depend exactly on how long it is and all the things they find, and we'll be finishing that to you guys at that time.
Good question. So have they done the high school yet?
Not yet.
Best for last, right? I just had a question on the safety advocates.
Yeah.
Now, we're currently, we can currently hire them ourselves. It's not a private security thing. Now, what, what training do they go through to be out of school? And how many, how do you figure out how many go? Is it based on, on population of school?
Yeah. Yeah, it's, so a lot of the times, we look for people specifically with a, a background in, in police and military. We do our own development, you know, and we sort of, you know, we'll, we'll have somebody in, you know, an area that we don't feel like is incredibly high need, we'll put somebody there who, you know, maybe doesn't have a job, so, you know, the security job, sort of military job, or something like that. You know, we, we do kind of pick strategically about where people go. But we do a lot of training on just, you know, basic procedures, protocols, how to, how to check people when they come in the building, things to look for. You know, our coordinator, Rich Torres, goes around, and he, you know, he works with people individually. He does walk around to the school, helps people like kind of see what to look out for, and all those different things. And then we have, you know, a professional development course and training available as well.
So how do you determine how many go to a, a, like, I'm assuming elementary schools have one?
Yeah.
Um, high school, back in the day, used to have twelve. Or middle schools have two, or one, or how, how is it? How do you determine? Is it based on the size of the school? Because obviously, more bodies, the more, you need to cover.
Yeah, elementary schools will generally have one, middle schools will have one, and then obviously more of the high school. I, I can get back to you if there's a more, you know, statistical method there.
And, and it's been based primarily on budget, and what we've been budgeting and allocating, so it's, this year, it's ten at the high school, one at every middle school, and one at every elementary school as well. And I think we added one at the alternative school this year. I think we had one previously, we added one to Regent and Denver.
And the middle school is not a resource officer, the high school?
And Granville.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Are, are they subcontractors, or are they employees of the, of the system?
Yes, it's the latter. They are our employees.
Any other questions? No? Thanks.
And I have one more, Chairperson Shalesky, and that is regarding our Teacher of the Year announcement. And so for any board member or anyone watching from home that did not have an opportunity to attend or hear the announcement, Ms. Emily Lopes, our teacher at Rogers Park Middle School, has been announced as our Teacher of the Year on behalf of Danbury Public Schools. So we're very excited, and she has committed to joining us for the next meeting. So we're looking forward to recognizing her. But I'd also like to say, it was a wonderful evening last night, an opportunity to recognize all of our representative teachers from all the schools in the district. And I want to take this opportunity to just thank my team for organizing the evening and, and really kicking off what I'm hoping is becomes a, an annual event for Danbury Public Schools. So I just want to thank, thank the board. And of course, again, thank Ms. Emily Lopes for winning Danbury Teacher of the Year. Thank you. That concludes, I'm sorry, Chairperson Shalesky, I had just two more, and this is just a quick thank you to the many staff members in our music and arts department, who volunteered their time to support an amazing community event, our Coda event at Broadview Middle School this weekend. Really, it was a celebration of the Arts Weekend. We had, I believe it was Thursday night, a music festival at Danbury High School. I believe it was the first, in the parking lot, outside, beautiful evening, families set up, almost like it was, you know, on the grass and hanging out, having a picnic style, and watching our, watching our kids perform, play music. One of our kids did a rock solo, solo gig. I mean, it was, it was a really great evening. There was a pizza truck out there, a cookie truck out there. It was a great evening. Families were out there with their families and celebrating with kids. And so it was a great opportunity to celebrate our finest, whether it was teachers last night, or our kids last week in the arts. And so I just want to thank all of those teachers who, quite frankly, get our kids ready to perform at their best, and then, of course, all of our students who performed, and we were able to showcase them. So thank you to all, everyone involved. And last but not least, June first, for the board, I think we had presented out, presented out on this a couple of weeks ago, but we have our next Danbury Career Academy Task Force meeting on June first. And so I will be happy to report out the outcome of that meeting at our next board meeting on June eighth. But looking forward to that. Our two assistant superintendents here on that committee, two councilmen, the mayor, another person from the mayor's office, and of course, two board members led by Chairperson Shalesky. So I believe it's six o'clock. And so I'm looking forward to that next meeting, and continuing to walk the task force, not only what the Danbury Career Academy is about. Our first meeting was about, really just providing some groundwork and context on how and why we landed on the academies for the high school. And so similarly, how we walked the board through. We thought it was important to walk the council through those things as well. And part of our agenda over the next series of meetings include walking them through the design, walking them through the plans for the school in terms of architectural designs, continue to get them excited. And as we lead into budget season next year, begin to talk through the specifics around what it's going to cost to outfit that building in terms of staff, what the impact will be on contracted services like transportation and food services in the building, and make sure the council and our city partners have a clear understanding of what we will need to open up that building. And so we anticipate it's going to be great dialogue over the next several months. And of course, we will take a break in July and August, but we will have our last task force meeting for this school year with a commitment to continue those conversations next year. So again, looking forward to updating the board on June eighth. But just want to make sure I may remind this group that we will be back in front of them next week. That really now concludes the superintendent's report. Any questions that you have, we'd be happy to answer. Otherwise, thank you.
Any questions from board members? Anything? The Sedexo Food Service Agreement is on the agenda as information. Is there anything that you would like to highlight for us regarding that?
Yes, and it, it's my understanding, this is an annual agreement that we need to share with the board, but Mr. Spain can provide a little context with the board.
The state of Connecticut allows one-year contract extensions, no longer than that, so this is another one-year extension. I think it's the second or third in a five-year period. The state also allow, gives us CPI, a maximum amount that we're allowed to pay Sedexo as for a five point nine percent increase. We felt that was too high. Our first offer was two point six, and the negotiations we agreed at four. These are monies that come out of the school loan fund themselves, not from our, our general budget. But I think they do a very good job. We're satisfied, and I think this is a reasonable increase for next, next year.
Thank you, Mrs. Spain.
Anything on that from board members? Thank you. Or Chairperson's report, I have a few things. It's been a while. In addition to Coda, the arts was very busy last week. There was the DHS Music Festival outside on Thursday evening, prior to Coda. And notable night that same day on
And notable night, that same day on, at Coda, notable night is the Band-Aids, which is the five-oh-one-C-three parent-run organization to support the marching band and color guard. They always do a really, really good job and it was a wonderful evening and Teresa and I were there supporting. Rogers Park Middle School also had their meal train charity dinner on Friday. And of course, the Teacher of the Year ceremony, I just want to say, it was really well done, really, really a nice event, so thank you for that. We have Memorial Day Parade, we are signed up, ready to go as representatives of the board. I just would like to get a show of hands, how many people plan to attend? Maybe.
Is there a flock of these here?
You're not the first person to ask me that. So we used to drive.
It was once.
We used.
That was my hay wagon.
I remember that, seriously. I remember that, yeah.
So maybe we could bring that back?
That's on the farm.
I have a Jeep and a trailer and we could dress up.
We used to do it in, Rich Genelli had a convertible.
Yes, yes.
That we used to go on.
So we used to drive and then people asked us why we didn't walk like the council members. I know Gladys doesn't care what the council.
I have put my walking years in Danbury up and down the street.
And I don't like to walk anywhere.
If I pull out one of our Jeeps with the doors off and the top off, would people come ride in a Jeep at least or?
One year, we did a school bus. They did the school bus, it was really, really great.
Wow.
Maybe a smaller one. From one side to the other, you know, it was.
So why can't we talk to them about?
Why, I think.
It was free.
It was a school, because they used to do, different schools used to walk, schools, the school in general, there was a bunch of kids and.
From each school?
Or was it like the Brownies and the Scotts, Reddick School?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
The marching band was the last one.
Yeah.
What's that?
I remember the marching band, the last one.
There's a lot of kid activities.
Yeah, but there's, I remember, there was, there was a banner that had all the schools on it and the students would hold it. I mean, this isn't that far back, I'm only a couple of years ago, I mean, is everything changed? What happened to everything?
I just remember. Old banner, old banner.
I remember the banner.
They had a banner for.
Because it was stored in my office.
With the logo of every single school and students would come, we'd walk with the students. I'm excited, one of those people like, remember when I was.
You do.
I don't know, man.
All right, I'll see about if we can put in our application, if we can change our application, our application already went in, if we can put in for a vehicle and at least we can drive Ms. Teresa around.
Yeah, I'd like, I mean, I'd like to go also.
And I can, you know, get, okay, great.
Walking, I'm not a fan of, but if I asked.
Okay, all right.
Can you get us the details, like where we need and everything?
Yes, yes, yeah. I believe it's nine o'clock on Rose Street, I believe, but I'll double check.
Yeah, where we park this.
It depends, do you want to park at the beginning or park at the end and then walk to the beginning?
Okay, you're over this.
All right, so that is that. Pep graduation, I did receive an email and I believe I forwarded it to all of you. People Empowering People is a ten-week community leadership program sponsored by Danbury Public Schools and Yukon. The class of 2022 is having their graduation on Thursday, June 30th at 6:00 PM at Patters Hall and we are all invited. The deadline for our board of ed, filling our board of ed vacancy is tomorrow. We have a few candidates to interview on Tuesday, May 30th, sorry, Tuesday, May 31st at 6:00 PM. And the posting reads that letter should be mailed to the office so that it comes through central office and Kara organizes us, stamps it and organizes us.
We need two hours, is it two hours to do the interview?
We have set two hours aside, but probably not, it depends on how many candidates we get. And I think that's, that's all that I want to highlight for now. Is there, are there any other board comments or updates?
I just want to thank the superintendent, the assistant superintendent, some of the police department for making Granville Avenue a beautiful place where parents can go to the crosswalk and put their children in the school. You can see that cars are slowing down, now they have the little thing, I can't think of the name of it, right in the center of the street, cars are slowing down, the kids are not so anxious to just leave their parents hand and one and take off. So I just want to thank everybody because it was quite a few times very dangerous coming down Granville Avenue with the small kids. And not just Granville Avenue, you know, there's something that can be done to just about all our schools. But I sit there a couple of times and I saw such dangerous thing that we could not let parents know that that was a school for kids and I just wanted to say, thank you, thank you so very much.
Thank you, Ms. Cooper, and I want to take this opportunity to thank Kelly Trushen's assistant superintendent, Dr. Sealy, Chief Operations Officer. They've both played a significant role in making sure that happened. And Kelly's actually still working with the city and refining some other pieces. That was our kind of local sign that we have in the middle of the street and it's, we bring it in, you know, when kids are being, when kids are arriving and when kids are dismissing, it's kind of a local sign, if you will, but we're hoping to have something more permanent and Kelly will be, well, she's going back and forth and we're working through a number of things to try to get this resolved, working with the city, that is, for some permanent signage out there. So in the interim, we have a solution in addition to an extra pair of hands on the campus to just make sure we keep the kids safe. So thank you for ringing it up, we appreciate it.
Is there a sign identifying the school?
Yes.
Is there one?
Absolutely, yes, there's a sign in front of the school and there's actually a crosswalk, not directly across from the school, the crosswalk is actually for the funeral home that's across from the school, but it's not necessarily ideal for families to cross. And so we're working with the cities, again, to get more permanent signage. In the interim, we have some kind of mobile signage that when we go out to release kids, we bring the sign out and then literally roll it back in. So we're finding that that's been helpful. In addition, we've deployed a safety advocate from the high school because they release much earlier than Granville and they go down to help provide an extra pair of hands at dismissal.
In addition to the staff.
That's right, in addition to the staff that's already in Granville, so thank you. Thank you for the question.
Anybody else? Questions, comments, updates? Motion to adjourn?
So who?
Moved by Al.
Second.
Seconded by Luis, I mean Teresa. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned.